Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in-person and virtual meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by Aronomic Elementary School students Nora Martin, Jaclyn Rojas Mendez, Ellie Nyo, Joanna Moller, oh boy, Shmal Halfer? Okay, and Jackson Shane, thank you for having me. Come on up and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, very good, very good. Joanna, Joanna, in the microphone, could you say your last name for me, please?
Shmal Halfer.
I had it. That was pretty good. Very good. Thank you so much. All right. I need board permission. A lot of folks here, I'm gonna make, try and make it easier for everybody. I need board permission to move the student representative report up and the superintendent's report up to now. These will be the next two things we do. Do I have permission from the board to do that?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, Kyle says we're good. All right, so first, the student, and thank you. Student Representative Fernando Sanchez is going to go into his report. He's got a family thing to go to after this, so we want to let him get his reporting. Go ahead, Fernando. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Fields, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and community members. For April report, Jade and I visited Bywood Elementary School, Aronomic Elementary School, and the kindergarten center. We also had the wonderful opportunity to meet with the fifth grade class from Bywood and Aronomic to answer any questions they may have about moving on to middle school. Earlier this month, Jade and I visited the kindergarten center and met with Mrs. Delosi to see how the kindergarten center has been doing since our last visit. Mrs. Delosi said that in the future, they'll be looking into the students' schedules for reading and literacy, and that she's been identifying potential leaders and wants to help them be ready for the first grade. It could be as simple as students knowing how to spell their name or knowing their ABCs. Since reading is an important topic at the kindergarten center, they have reading specialists and MTSS groups focused on helping out the students during intervention times to work under specific needs. One of the challenges of the kindergarten center is supporting students with learning disabilities. Reading teachers and social workers come together to see what they will do to meet that child's educational needs. However, even without having parents, having students identified with learning disabilities, they already have classes in place to support them. Kindergarten, kindergarten is the first step on a student's journey through school, and Mrs. Delosi wants her students to love the school. Her students come from all around the world, and some come without knowing any English, so knowing their cultures and making them feel like they belong is of utmost priority. To prepare their students for the big transition to elementary school, Mrs. Delosi meets with the, with the first grade teacher regularly to ask them what the student, what students need to make sure they are prepared for first grade. It is also important to them to teach students the routines of being a full-time student. Mrs. Delosi says having communication with the first grade teacher is key, and it is also crucial to build students up to be first graders with high expectations. To deal with all the different emotions students may feel at such a young age, having patience and love is crucial for teachers, and they make sure to love their students and show them the utmost emotional support and care. Due to students' age, they have to teach them how to appropriately respond to things, and although there are kids that are more emotional, all students benefit from having a positive relationship with their teachers. Students also have social and emotional behavior lessons with their counselor, which teachers also follow up on. To inspire empathy, Mrs. Delosi reminds them to look at the students and picture their child and think how they would want someone to respond to them. The moment they walk in the doors, the students are their kids, and they want to support them as much as they can. For a report, Jade and I also had the opportunity to visit, revisit Bywood Elementary School for their Student of the Month Assembly and to meet with the principal, Mrs. Mian, and the assistant principal, Mrs. Newby, to see how things have been going since our last meeting. While observing the assembly, one thing was clear: Bywood is all about fun. Our visit began with an exciting Student of the Month Assembly in which Jade and I got to present the honorees with their Student of the Month certificates and to play games like tossing hula hoops to land on a true-to-life-sized horse statue with Mrs. Newby riding on it with a cape and crown. Yeah, I know. You probably saw that picture on our social media. After the assembly, we got the chance to ask Mrs. Mian and Mrs. Newby a couple of questions about the future of Bywood. They began by stating that in the future, they want to learn more about AI and how they can help students in their day-to-day learning. Although AI could never replace a teacher, it could enhance the learning process for students. To keep a record of student progress, each student has an individual binder in which they track their data. This helps them focus on growth and not just on proficiency. The point of this is to encourage them that even if they don't hit the benchmark, what matters is that they meet their personal goals and they are making progress. Since every child has their own goals, and they all learn differently, teachers have individualized their way of teaching so it adapts to every student. Math is also a pivotal subject at Bywood, therefore they do MTSS groups in which students are grouped by, with other classmates. That way, all the students struggling with one topic can go over it once again, but together, which led to the phrase "we didn't get it yet" to become a favorite at Bywood. To further insensitize effort and growth, most growth award is also given out to the student who has improved the most. To continue promoting and embracing diversity, Mrs. Mian hopes the culture fair is an ongoing tradition at Bywood. She explained it was important for her to get to know and understanding every culture by having parents and students share facts and history about their culture and showcase traditional food and crafts. To show how difficult it can be for foreign students, Bywood's EL teacher will sometimes teach other classes in Bengali, so students get an idea of how tough it can be to adapt to a new language. Furthermore, morning announcements are also read in a different language every single morning, so everyone feels included. But in the words of Mrs. Mian, no matter what language you speak, smile because that's the international language. As elementary school is coming to an end for our fifth graders, Bywood's teachers are making sure to remind them that they are our future leaders, and to prepare them for the future, students also play important roles within the school, like in their student council, managing contests, and giving out speeches during assemblies. Mrs. Mian and Mrs. Newby want their students to know that it's all about using their strengths as leaders who also follow the three Bs in our kind. For the end of the year, our future sixth graders will have a barbecue and a carnival, which students, which the students also run. Although teachers have done an amazing job at preparing their students for the, for middle school, Jade and I came up with the idea of having a small Q&amp;A-style meeting with the entire fifth grade class at Bywood, so they could ask any questions they may have. That way, we could ease any doubt, anxiety, or just plain old curiosity. To have the opportunity to talk to them and answer so many questions is one of my favorite things I've gone to do, and Jade and I wish them the best of luck in the future. Mrs. Mian grew up in a neighboring school district, but as a, but as she grew, she knew she wanted to become part of our Upper Darby community. She lives and breathes Upper Darby and has a, and has had the pleasure of working in the district and four different elementary schools thus far. She loves her staff and how they have trusted, supported, and allowed her to do the things she's done at Bywood, and you only have to spend a couple of seconds to know that that is nothing but the truth. She is extremely grateful to Dr. Manfree and Dr. McGary, who have done so much for elementary schools. She is grateful to this district and system, which have seen her grow from teacher to a lead teacher to a principal. In the words of Mrs. Mian, and I quote, "I've been totally invested into Upper Darby. Our kids from many different elementary schools are great, and it all has to do with the administration, the staff, the people, and the board. This district from day one has felt like a family system. I'll forever be grateful for all the opportunities they provided for me. I always want to be here, and I am beyond blessed and grateful, although it is hard, it is a hard district to work at, and not all days are sunshine and rainbows, but what makes it worth it is the staff and kids who always come back smiling, willing to continue to learn and grow." Our meeting concluded with Mrs. Mian and Mrs. Newby explaining all they want for people is to walk through Bywood and say it is one of the happiest places on earth, which Jade and I had the privilege to experience firsthand. Although Jade and I are not Bywood graduates, they found their way to our hearts and warmed them with their charisma and their inspiring and endless effort to build up this future generation of Upper Darby Royals.
Um, I'd like to start my section off by apologizing for being late. I'm sorry. There was a lot of traffic. But Fernando and I had the pleasure of visiting Aronomic again to do a check-in on the school, and they were doing wonderfully. Fernando got to see the huge school, and we both saw the new additions, such as the finished hallways and areas, and the amazing gym during our tour. In the future, Aronomic wants to start integrating AI technology into their teaching methods, although managing it will be a challenge. Every couple of years, there will be a shift, but that's normal for changes. Technology has, as, has actively forced teachers to adapt their teaching methods. It is critical to have a position, positive relationship, sorry, with learning, therefore maintaining an active in-person learning style while employing technology. Using technology to collect data on what students know and don't know will allow teachers to help them grow and succeed. Technology also enables them to differentiate instruction, particularly in the elementary world, where students have varying abilities, different languages, levels, et cetera. So, technology serves as a great equalizer and balancer, allowing the teacher to target and separate groups of students so that they can individually focus on their level and growth by providing different activities based on their levels. Aronomic plans to prioritize, prioritize inclusion. They're starting at the teacher level and progressing to the student level by simply getting to know each other and tearing down walls. Things were so split at the start of the year because Aronomic was freshly blended, but now everyone has joined and formed one large community to ensure everyone feels like they belong. Inclusivity is opening doors of acceptance for their staff, students, and community members to demonstrate their cultures, languages, et cetera. Um, Aronomic wants to offer opportunities for students to involve themselves in American culture while remaining true to themselves and their differences. The best element of American culture is being multicultural and sharing our differences. They are a diverse group of people, which is amazing, and Aronomic's responsibility to make everyone feel welcome. Because of the quarantine, students' attention spans have significantly reduced as a result of spending those early developmental years in front of screens. So, every Wednesday, students receive a social and emotional lesson from the trauma-informed leadership team, or also known as TILT, who go over what those symptoms, actions, and feelings look like and how to deal with them, balancing needs with instruction by using timers and brain breaks. Morning meetings are held to assist individuals who struggle with eye contact and conversation. They also have a full-time counselor and social worker. The counselor conducts one session per month and teaches about issues while the social worker organizes lunch bunches and other activities. There was also a safe-hands video that the counselor and students gladly participated in. Aronomic is in a unique situation because the elementary school feeds into both middle schools, Beverly Hills and Drexel Hill, but the teachers are doing an excellent job preparing fifth graders for it. There are clear standards of conduct and behavior, and the district has done an excellent job of catering to students and not just in an educational sense. Everyone in the building is working towards the same goal, preparing the students to leave the nest and soar. There were many growing pains, but in the end, they made a significant progress and performed wonderfully. Providing an enriching experience through theater, arts, athletics, and other activities is crucial at Aronomic since it's what's remembered later in life. Thus, it is best to begin as early as elementary school to prepare them for success. They are very excited to start middle school, but there is still some nervousness and dread of the unknown. There will be many tears at the Moving Up Ceremony, but they will be successful. During our interview, Fernando and I asked if we could hold an assembly with the future sixth graders at Aronomic to ease their minds, and we received a yes. So, at the assembly, it was wonderful and filled me with such joy to see them so excited and curious about the future and being able to ease their minds about what's to come. They had so many questions, varying from homework and classwork, the schedule, potential stressors, bullying, et cetera, but I think Fernando and I did a great job answering as many questions as we could, providing a general insight due to us both being Drexel Hill Middle School alumni and some of the students going to Beverly Hills Middle School, and giving them a clear understanding of the expectations of the world of middle school. They dreaded the thought of more homework and responsibility, but we know for a fact those amazing kids will do an amazing job and adapt quickly to what's to come. This is all for our report. Thank you for your time.
This will probably be the biggest crowd you ever have for your reports, so, lucky us. We're now gonna go into the report of the superintendent. I think a few of you are here for the report of the superintendent, so to keep you from having to stand in the back all night, we're gonna go into the report of the superintendent now. Go ahead, Dr. McGary.
Yeah, that, that may be the most comprehensive and longest, and I've been here for a while. No, like, really well-done, really comprehensive report of the student rep, so just make sure you pass that on, even though you got a little here a little late. You did a great job. Was it really, really? I think, I think Josh Miss Mian is doing, doing a lot to try to commandeer the spotlight in some of those, those, but yeah, yeah. So, but I want to say thank you to you and to Joanne, Andrea, and Mr. Simpson, allowing us, Terrence as well, that we're gonna have you guys give your presentation after I go through this report, all right? But I want to say thank you in advance. I know your report's gonna be great. We have a large audience here with us tonight. So, first and foremost, we're gonna talk about recognizing our student athletes, our musicians, our poets, and some great teachers and athletes here in the district, and then I'll get to a part of my report where I'll talk about specifically an update on the budget. So, it's good that we have a large audience, and it's good that you allow me to move this up, because I do want to conclude about your advocacy for our budget. But I'm gonna jump right in. There are twenty-six individuals I'm gonna recognize first. We're not gonna jump down every single time with you. When I, if you're here, if you can come up as I call your name, if we can hold our applause until the twenty-six are finished, we'll get a picture. You can sit down if you, if you can, and then we'll call the next group of folks we're honoring tonight. We have so many talented kids, and we want to make sure that we recognize you all respectfully. So, first and foremost, first group that's up, PMA Music Fest, Pennsylvania Music Association, twenty-six students. Several elementary and middle school students were elected to perform in the Pennsylvania PMEA Music Fest this year. We'd like to thank, goes without saying, obviously, our parents, but our great teachers, Kaitlin Lesniak, Jim Morris, Josh Kim, Jason Mayerzak, Nicole Nordtuski, Christopher Culp, and we have an outstanding supervisor, K-12 art, music, and theater, Christopher Lashley. So, congratulations, you don't have to clap yet, to the students. So, let's see if we can hold off until we get through all of their names. Cade Wilson from Garreford Elementary School, David Phillips, Lucy Garcia, Christine Maddox, Colin Cowan, James Sims, I believe the third, Noah Hatton, Mayank Banes, Wazi Mara Kruba, Christian Makundu, Grace Clark Keller, Kayler actually, I think, Sylvia Chen, Jaden Raffensperger, who happens to be an outstanding baseball player. I don't know if Jaden's here or not. Vian Zhao, Lilian Palmer, Hazel O'Connor, Joseph Tarsia, Benjamin Harkness, Clifton Langston, Leo Ixted. This family is very talented. They'll be up here for a lot of awards. Remi Lazur, Andrew Lazur, that family will be up here for a lot of awards. Antonella Tazuri, Tarsia, Umu Bari, Julian Bligh, James Mendoza. They're the first twenty-six that we wanted to recognize. Congratulations. All right, so Upper Darby High School Jazz Band was very successful at the Jazz Festival. They received an outstanding rating for four of the 2024 High School Jazz Festival competitions, and also, in their final competition, were recognized Best Saxophone Section. So, if you're here, I don't know if the, if the jazz group is here. If you want to come up and get a picture and be recognized, come on up. High School Jazz Festival? Yeah, come on. Don't be shy. Listen, you could take all, you could take all the credit. So, this is like preparing for graduation. We're gonna recognize nine people in this group. Hold your applause until each name has been recognized. This is the following eighth-grade students were invited to audition to become members of the Delaware County Young Musicians Honors Band and Orchestra. I see the Fiorentino Wong's, I believe, in the audience. For years, this has been an honor for the folks in our district that go out and do this. It's an audition-only honors group. It's very difficult on a county level to be a part of it. So, we're proud of the families and the students, and obviously the teachers in the district who've contributed to a lot of this work. So, we'll start at Drexel Hill Middle School, five folks, hold your applause, then we'll go to the orchestra, and then Beverly Hills. So, from Drexel Hill Middle School, Ulysses Vargas, David Moore, Remi Laser, Andrew Laser, Asher Gonzalez. And then, as they're coming up, the orchestra portion of this, Leo Ixted, and then, that's from Drexel Hill, and then from Beverly Hills, Lucas Lynn, Olivia Fiorentino Wong, and then from Upper Darby High School, Ian, and then Martha Rise Brown. So, congratulations to all of our talented musicians. Still more to come. Twenty-three. I know it's a lot, but we're in the business of recognizing kids in these meetings. There's a lot of legislative stuff, but we're really here for kids. That's, that's the goal in the district. So, Delaware County Band Festival. The following students performed with the Delaware County Honors Bands, an ensemble made up of the top students of six different Delaware County middle school bands. From Drexel Hill Middle School, the names will sound familiar. Asher Gonzalez, David Moore, Remi Lazur, Andrew Lazur, Owen Innis, Jack Stahl, Leo Ixted, Jeff Liu, Ulysses Lugan Vargas, and Matthew Martino, and then from Beverly Hills, Cory Taylor, Kevin Chen, Samantha Gola, Lucas Lynn, Randvier Baldwin, Wall, Tasmin Hamid, Kevin Tron, Tyler Tron, Nikki Trung, Maxim Ganges, know that family. Good to see the Ganges, Malia Chili, Sylvia Chen, and again, Olivia Fiorentino Wong. Congratulations. Switch gears a little bit. Get away from music and the arts. We'll come back to it, I think, again, but I want to break it up a little bit. I see some Bob Miller basketball coach back there and some other coaches. Gonna recognize some of our athletes. Twenty-three in particular. So, congratulations to the following Upper Darby High School students for being recognized. I think our AD is back there, Russell Bennett as well. Recognized for their outstanding efforts. Basketball, Boys All Central, Tyseer Jackson, honorable mention, and Elijah Gunther, honorable mention. My fault. If we can hold off till we get all, all these folks up here, so if you guys can stay, that was my fault. You were allowed to clap that time. Wrestling, I'm sorry, Girls Basketball All Central, Mia Wilson, honorable mention. All right, that's good. No clapping yet, though. Wrestling All Central, Lucas Senkow, Jacob Senkow, that's the famous Senkow family, yes, was once named after Senkow Elementary School, Nathan O'Donnell, and Mustafa Khan. If you're here, come on up. Swimming All Central, John McCarthy, honorable mention, Sebastian Vale, honorable mention, Elise Olmstead, I see Elise, honorable mention, and Gabrielle, Gabriela Fiorentino Wong, honorable mention. Come on up. While Elise is coming up, Elise, if you could put your hand up for everybody, not only an athlete but a scholar, she'll be recognized again later on. She's also been recognized for breaking a record at Upper Darby High School. This year, she recorded a three nineteen-point-ten in the eleven dive event, which is an Upper Darby High School diving record. Field hockey, Fatima Alaman, National Academic Squad, Olivia Lyons, National Academic Squad, Casey McGee, National Academic Squad, Kayla Okiri, National Academic Squad, Abigail Seiler, National Academic Squad, Zinab Ibrahim, National Academic Squad, Isha Mansare, National Academic Squad. Not finished yet. National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association recognizes All Americans. Sebastian Vale, Academic All-American for Swimming. Elise Olmstead, Academic All-American for Swimming. Gabriela Fiorentino Wong, Academic All-American for Swimming. And one of my harshest critics and has become, I consider him a friend now, Ryan Hansely, Academic All-American Swimming. Julia Schitzlin, Academic All-American. If you're here, please come up. Now, we'll get to track and field. Nope, not, hold on, just one second. Track and field. Members of the Upper Darby High School Boys Indoor Track Team traveled to Boston the weekend of March the tenth to complete, compete in the New Balance Indoor Track Meet. There were one of only twenty-four teams invited to this prestigious event. Sophomore Danielle Chukwu and juniors Gabrielle Tissao, Abadoulaye Sangara, and Michael Oni entered the meet ranked twenty-second. They finished in fourteenth place. Listen to this time. Thirty-one point fifty-seven seconds, which is the second fastest time in the history of Upper Darby School District. So, that's unbelievable. And sophomore Danielle Chukwu finished seventeenth at the Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association Indoor Track and State Field, State Championships just two weeks before that. So, congratulations to all of them. And wait, hold on. Kelsey Beerling, who was my high school British literature teacher, who's in the back of the room. Congratulations on being recognized by the Track and Field Coaches Association Service Blazer Award, which is given to members of the Track and Field Coaches Association of Greater Philadelphia, who in the eyes of their fellow coaches have done work above and beyond the call of duty week after week. Congratulations, Ms. Beerling. Come on up. Four honorees for what is known as the Delaware County Right to Education Local Task Force for Making a Difference. Pretty prestigious award. There's four criteria. Overall, I won't read them all to you, but it's about making schools an inclusive setting in, in the district and in the county. So, we have four students that were recognized. Elijah Robinson Easely of Beverly Hills Middle School, along with Megan Kelly, Upper Darby High School for Overcoming Challenges, and the Overcoming Challenges Honor. If you're here, come on up. Megan Kelly, Upper Darby High School, along with Madison Campbell for the Dynamic Duo Honor, and then Madison Campbell, Upper Darby High School, along with Megan Kelly, again for the Dynamic Duo Honor. Are, are they here? Not here? All right, let's clap for them anyway. The students that are part of that, obviously, there's always a great teacher behind that, and Jaclyn Sharkey, Special Education Teacher Life Skills Support at Upper Darby High School, was selected for the twenty-three twenty-four Delaware County Right to Education Local Task Force Making a Difference Award for going above and beyond supporting inclusivity in our schools. Won an award. I don't know if the teacher was able to make it out tonight. So crowded. No? Congratulations to Jaclyn Sharkey. We're getting closer to the most important part, my part, which is the budget. I'm only kidding. Seventy-sixth Annual Delaware Valley Science Fair. It's been, it feels like month after month, we've recognized the unbelievable work of the high school science, gifted teachers and science teachers and the students that are involved in that program, but here we are again. They just continue to thrive in each competition that they go to. This is the seventy-sixth Annual Delaware Valley Science Fair. Nasiva Arna, third place in ninth grade medicine and health. So, congratulations if you're here. If you want to come on up. Elise, I know you don't want to come up, but you have to come up. Elise Olmstead, third place in twelfth grade Earth and Space Sciences. Lamine Silla, honorable mention in teams. Muhab Almas, honorable mention in teams also. Abdallah Ilokli, honorable mention, and then Ridwan Munstasir, honorable mention in teams. I don't know if you're here. So, this, this next individual was actually in Los Angeles today, working on this project, but congratulations, he could not be here, Mud Afkar Torano. We honored Mud in, in April for first place in the tenth grade division for his project and title. entitled or titled "Effectiveness of Calculating the Red Shift of Quasars Photometrically." I looked it up today, it has to do with a black hole, so I got scared and I stopped, stopped reading about, stopped reading about black holes. I don't want to be up all night. I drink enough coffee, but it's pretty intense stuff. To give you some context regarding the achievement, medals and judges interviewed the 52 first-place winners and selected 15 students from the tri-state area who qualified for the International Science Engineering Fair. He continued to work on his project for several more months, acquiring new skills such as coding for machine learning and extensive data analysis. He was able to do video conference with an Italian astrophysicist who asked him how old he was at the time, Antonio Di Santo, for guidance on his project. Has gone on, like I said today, to be in Los Angeles to continue to work on this project. So, congratulations to Mood Aftkar Torano for Upper Darby High School for a medal winner for being selected to attend the all-expenses-paid International Science and Engineering Fair in Los Angeles, California. So, congratulations, pretty awesome. We went and honored this teacher at work recently. I don't know if she's here again, I don't see her in the audience, I don't think so. But Stephanie Hickman, Upper Darby High School, was selected for the 24 Pennsylvania Council for Teachers of Mathematics, Master of Mathematics Award. So, Ms. Hickman, Stephanie Hickman, congratulations on that outstanding achievement. Two more to recognize and then I'll go as quickly as I can through my final part of the report. But Thirty-Fifth Annual Young Poets of Delaware County Poetry Contest. There were 500 entries and we have a winner. And the winner is from Beverly Hills Middle School, Aubrey Walker, first place in the Thirty-Fifth Annual Young Poets of Delaware County. The title was poet, the poem was titled "The Gym." I don't know if Aubrey's here or not. No? She is? Oh, come on up. And recognizing just, you know, another outstanding educator in the district, we have Peg Gallagher, Margaret Gallagher, Highland Park High Elementary School for being selected for the 24 Main Line Today Excellence in Nursing Award. Congratulations to Ms. Gallagher. So, the last part of my report, which I wasn't joking in the beginning, it's good to have an audience here for this. And then, if you have to go, I understand, although we'd love you to stay, you don't have to leave. We are in the process of going through our budget for next school year, the 2425 budget. The governor's proposed announcement was that the school district could see an influx of $16 million into our budget. We're being told that we're not sure if that's going to happen. So, number one, we need your continued advocacy to fund public education in Pennsylvania. More importantly, Upper Darby School District, which is one of the most underfunded schools and districts in the Commonwealth. It's been a Supreme Court ruling, it's unconstitutional, the way public schools are funded in Pennsylvania, and the $16 million would be unbelievable. Look at what already happens with the great teachers and the work that's here. We recognize kids every single month, unbelievable talented families and students and teachers. The $16 million would go a long way. In our proposed budget, we are adding four new E.L. teachers in our budget. There were many more requests for staffing that we certainly need, but they are the must-have going to next school year. So, I want to make sure you're clear and aware of what's going on with our budget and our budgetary needs. I do want to thank our U.D.E.A., U.S.P., U.S.P. and our students, our community members, parents that got involved and wrote letters and advocated, that we took to our state reps, to our school board, members who advocated. I know Ms. Williams, Ms. Glenn, our board president, vice president, everybody advocated. We held a day here. I want to thank our Representative Curry, Representative Boyd, Senator Carney. Just last Thursday, hope you tuned in, there was a funding or equity forum led by Representative Curry that was held, asking questions about funding, advocating for funding. So, we're blessed that our local state reps and our senator are pro-public education and some communities are not. So, what I ask is that we continue to update one another on this funding, get out there, talk to people, make sure this funding comes through. We are building a budget right now without those resources, without those dollars. And I think it's important that you're aware of that and we're transparent about the budget that we're putting forward. There are only four new real ads this year and they are for E.L. positions. With that said, with that said, that concludes my report for this evening. We're President Fields.
Fantastic, excellent report. Dr. McGary, congratulations to all the award winners tonight. All right, give yourselves a round of applause. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation. I hope this is okay to go into. By Ironomic Elementary School Principal, Mr. Josh Rehack, and Assistant Principal, Ms. Andrea Simpson, titled "It's a Great Time to Be an Ironomic Royal: Highlights of the New Ironomic." Thank you, Josh.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. So, good evening, President Fields, members of the board, Superintendent McGary, fellow administrators, and the entire Upper Darby School community that has left with us tonight. My name is Josh Rehack and I have the absolute privilege of being the principal of Ironomic Elementary School. I'm here tonight with the wonderful Ms. Simpson, our assistant principal, and we are here to provide you with a sneak peek into all the wonderful things that are happening on our new campus. So, as you'll see tonight, it's a great time to be a royal and that has been our tagline this school year. We have shirts made and you'll see a little... Did I do that?
That enthusiasm is fantastic. Go ahead.
I got everyone back. All right, great. You know, if you've been following the many updates or had an opportunity to drive down Vermont Road over the last few years, Ironomic Elementary School has transformed into a building from the 1930s into a 21st-century learning space for our students, our staff, and our community to enjoy. This year, we merged with our close friends at Walter Senko Elementary School, where we welcomed 250 more students and 20-plus staff members to create the new and improved Ironomic. As the year started, with construction comes some challenges, but our school community proved resilient and patient as we continued to win spaces back throughout the school year. Those are things that we adults notice that kids don't notice. So, our students didn't skip a beat and they have been enjoying those state-of-the-art classroom spaces, which consists of our library, our cafeteria, our awesome just classroom spaces, and the showstopper, which you'll see in this video, our new gymnasium. Throughout the transition process, our goal was always to create an environment where our students felt, our whole entire school community felt welcomed and instantly part of our strong school culture. Thanks to the rich traditions and cultures from both of our schools, we absolutely hit the ground running. Our school community did not disappoint and our students have proven eager to get involved from the jump, whether it's through our many home and school events, our running club, our strong music program, better, sorry, our reading Olympics, just to name a few. And more and more students and families than ever before are engaging in the many events and activities and day-to-day operations that make Ironomic special. As you can imagine, it is a great time to be an Ironomic royal. So, kind of at this time, sit back, relax, and hear for yourself all the great things that are happening.
When I heard that all of the kids were going to come from Senko, I was like, wow, this is exciting because, you know, it's not every day that you get a new school just coming in and, you know, being here.
I felt bad then happy, like bad about how I had to go to another school and happy about how close it was then Senko.
A lot of the teachers at Senko really wanted to make sure that our students would have a good transition and have a good first year. A lot of that involved making sure that everything was accessible.
They told us way ahead of time, so during the school year, we prepared.
They had meetings and lunch meetings between the first through the fourth grades so that the students would be able to intermingle and meet each other.
Senko came on the bus.
There was a lot of fun activities and talking.
I got to socialize a lot. We had to play in the new playgrounds.
And after playing the games, we had lunch with the new Ironomic kids. And I actually like noticed two people from my kindergarten class.
I felt kind of happy inside because I did make some new friends.
That was very good for the kids to come see the school, get to meet the kids that they know they'll be hanging out with the following year and all, and kind of get the lay of the land.
Everyone was excited because it's going to be a new building for all of us, not just Senko being here, but all of Ironomic. It's just so different on the inside. Lucky us, it's just, it's just beautiful.
The very new singer of Ironomic, like how they got a bigger gym than us and like how they got a new cafeteria. The classrooms are looking nice and they have lockers like a sixth-grade school would have.
I liked the library. They had built shelves and they had more books and I love reading. So, when I saw this, I was like, yes, finally I can read more books because I'm pretty sure I read the whole library last year.
Our recess yard, it was a very small place and we had to like cross like streets. This recess yard, we could just go out, we don't really have to cross any streets. And like, there's a very big grassy field as well. It's a very big school. They have like bigger spaces and like, I know Senko was so small.
I came from a building that logistically had a lot of challenges.
The multipurpose space there, it was tough because you would have gym going on and lunch going on and then sometimes our music teacher would be trying to have lessons on the stage while gym's going on and the lunch is going and it gets really loud.
The space we used to have for instrument lessons was a lobby, it was an open space.
It's distracting and less focusing and now that we have individual spaces, it's not as bad.
Point for point, all those things have been alleviated. Now, students can really learn in spaces that are conducive to, you know, finding their potential. And our students now in this building are definitely in a place where they can thrive.
When everybody actually showed up, I was like, I feel like this is going to be like the best school year I've ever had. And the thing is, it is, it is definitely the best school year I've ever had.
We get to sit next to them and we get to work with them in group pairs. Almost every kid has a new friend from Senko.
I've made some new friends who were in my grade and I talk to other people more because I have more confidence in myself and it really helps me talking to other people. So, I really like how it's bigger so I can talk to more people.
Building that relationship is key, whether it's just the students or the teachers, saying hi, introducing yourself, talking, and making sure that everybody's feeling welcome, feeling adapted into the school is really important because in all, we are a team.
Like how they say in announcements, do good, they make new friends and learn something new every day.
It's not the Ironomic that I'm used to, like it's more diverse, like we're branching out more and I just feel like this feels amazing.
Family Heritage Night just happened and it's bigger, so there's more people to be involved and they are being involved and it just makes it that much better.
Last spring, the Senko population came for Family Heritage Night.
And I knew adding that culture, bringing that culture in, was only going to increase the Family Heritage Night this year, which made it even better. It was really unique using the stage area for Family Heritage Night, having a band playing and introducing their cultures.
That night, I shared my culture with everybody. I heard there was like a lot of people there, so I got like super nervous because I saw some of my friends. My teacher, Ms. Lance, she squealed and she's like, oh, you did a good job. And that, like that, when I saw, when I saw her, it made me like calm down for a little bit, so yeah.
Having hundreds of people within that gym and then hundreds of people funnel into that cafeteria, as well as just trying different food, meeting new people and building that relationship and the culture, which to me is key to successful school.
There's so much going on and like I know that there have been like years of planning before this in order to merge these students into one and connect them. So, I'm just really excited that it paid off.
A big compliment to all of us that we all got along, we've all meshed and brought each other's things together to make it a wonderful environment for everybody. And yes, it gets noisy in here sometimes.
With two schools that have now become one family, we have improved in every way possible. These enhancements not only improve the daily school life of our students, but also elevate our educational standards, preparing our students more effectively for the challenges of the future. Equally important is the diversity we now celebrate. This merger has brought together a richer tapestry of cultural backgrounds, perspectives, and ideas. Our school community is more reflective of the world around us. Let us also acknowledge the challenges that come with change. It has required adjustments, patience, understanding from one another. However, through open communication and a shared commitment to our students' success, we are building a school culture that is inclusive, welcoming, and forward-thinking. As we move forward, we will continue to embrace the opportunities that our unity offers. Together, we are a powerhouse of potential, a beacon of hope, and excellence in education.
Josh, Andre, great job. I know it was a lot, Josh, a lot of sleepless nights. I do want to say, you know, he's probably not tuned in, but Frank Salerno, you know, people, the young man, you know, that was wonderful in the presentation. Twenty-eight, it was close to 28 public meetings to get to that moment. Twenty-eight and one that went until 1:00 in the morning just to expand a school and renovate a building in this district. I remember sitting in the old office, administration office, on a virtual call till 1:00 a.m., trying to get just simple township approval for something that really was not meant to go till 1:00 in the morning. And with Frank, and Frank did an awesome job. And then, going to a hearing, two days in court, Kyle, with your firm, when neighbors took us to court to try to stop the project from happening. So, when somebody says, how long did it take? I know there's some in the audience who felt like it's been 40 years. Twenty-eight meetings, in some communities, it happens with One Act 34 and it's just celebrated. Twenty-eight meetings to have that. And then, as Josh, as you know, and Dr. Manfree, as you know, and Ms. Simpson, as you know, when we started the merge, there were doubters saying it's never going to work, this is going to be horrible. It's a compliment to you guys and your leadership and to the teachers and the staff, this board having the courage to pull it off, and the kids. I mean, it was beautiful, that presentation. I know it's a headache, but for those of us who've been here long enough, pretty awesome point of pride that we pulled that off as a team. So, congratulations to you guys, it means a lot.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for all the work, for that childhood was a long time coming and honest, I think some of that started before he was born. Josh was there before and is there now and thank you for guiding the ship to this moment and Ms. Simpson as well. And to kind of, kind of get on the point that you made, Dan, one of the things with change in any community is that up until the change happens, nobody wants it to happen, right? There's all the panic, there's all the meetings, there's all the concerns, there's all the whatevs, and then, once it happens, people say, oh, we should have done this years ago, right? And we have to, those of us that are pushing for these changes have to remember that people are concerned about change, right? And if we believe in what we're doing, we just have to keep moving in that direction and people have to trust that there is anxiety when it comes to change. And then, when that change happens, it's typically a very positive thing. And this is really an example of that. I lived near that school. My favorite thing about that addition is that on the gym in the corner, the corner has windows on the building on each side and there's sun through that room like almost all day and it is the most beautiful thing you've ever seen. I know the board has a tour of the building and we have a ribbon cutting ceremony at the end of the month, so I'm looking forward to that. But it, there's, the district is overdue for a lot of changes and updates and so there'll be a lot of moments like we have with this school, but the outcomes are going to be positive. The outcomes are always going to be positive, in my opinion. Okay? Thank you, Josh, thank you, team over there. The final item on the work session, go ahead. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Highland Park Elementary School Principal, Ms. Joanne DeVito, and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Terrence Williams, titled "Fiftieth Anniversary of the PA State Insect Adoption."
So, we're going to take you to the past. So, good evening, Upper Darby School Board Representatives, President...
Now, we're going to talk about bugs.
Fields, Superintendent Dr. McGary, Central Administration, and the Upper Darby Community. I am Joanne DeVito, very proud principal of Highland Park, and this is our wonderful assistant, Terrence Williams. What were you doing 50 years ago in 1974? Many of you probably weren't born like Mr. Williams. I was in seven... I, I was in seventh grade, making plans to go to the parade in the city to celebrate the Flyers Stanley Cup Championship at Highland Park Elementary School, which at the time was a building much closer to Westchester Pike, on the same grounds, but much closer to Westchester Pike while their new building was being built. We're taking, this is 1974. We are the youngest building until the new one gets built. A group of third graders were still celebrating their accomplishment of having the Firefly officially named as the Pennsylvania State Insect, thanks to their vision, hard work, and resilience. So I had, I lived nearby on Copley Road in Upper Darby and I didn't remember this happening. I was probably celebrating the third national championship of the Immaculata Mighty Max or watching the Flyers. But I was intrigued when I came across the, a plaque honoring this accomplishment. There was a plaque that said, Home of the Firefly. And it was apparently displayed in the building, but for whatever reason, or maybe Dr. Council knows, it wasn't up. And I found it in a closet. I'm assuming you were painting or renovating something, Dr. Council, and you put it away somewhere. I briefly looked at the date and I thought, wow, I wonder how they, this all came about and thinking, we'll have to do something. Ironically, within a month of me finding the plaque, a very active Upper Darby community member, Nicholas Hoyt, reached out to me and said, hey, I'm, you know, looking into the history of Upper Darby and I came across an article about a Firefly plaque. Have you ever done anything to celebrate, you know, this Highland Park's role in the Pennsylvania State Insect? I said, not yet, but we'll definitely plan something. So with the help of our Director of Communication, Aronda Buford, her team, Bernadette, Jason, Nora, and Don, we, along with our Highland Park staff volunteers and the support of Dr. McGary and Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Manfree, we planned a 50th anniversary celebration of the Firefly being officially named the Pennsylvania State Insect. Enjoy the highlights of this phenomenal day. So I was cleaning out a closet in the building a few years ago and I came across the plaque. And I asked staff if they remember anything about it. And they said, oh, it used to be hung up, but they must have taken it down during one of the painting or some renovation.
The plaque was a culmination of the work of this third grade class. The third grade class had a phenomenal teacher who spent the whole year teaching them all the important things, but something so much more even meaningful for, to them that they have taken away with them.
Our third grade class is from Highland Park, made the Firefly the state insect of Pennsylvania 50 years ago. It was actually signed into legislation, April 10th, 1974. Our teacher started with an article about another class in Maryland having the Monarch Butterfly as their state insect.
We had a wonderfully innovative teacher who thought, wouldn't this be a great teaching experience to show how a bill became a law?
We in turn thought about it and voted on an insect ourselves. And we decided to pick the Firefly. Mostly because Fireflies didn't really hurt anything. They were neat to look at and we all felt very comfortable with that.
We got a list of all the state legislators in Pennsylvania. And we wrote out our letters advocating for this.
We also went door to door with petitions. We had bumper stickers that everybody in Upper Darby, or at least the Highland Park area, had on their cars. We had a lot of television coverage. We had a lot of newspaper coverage. And within a few months, we were on our way to having legislation for the Firefly to become the state insect of Pennsylvania. We traveled to Harrisburg twice that year, once to show what we knew about the Firefly and what, why we wanted it to state insect. And the second time we went up is when the Governor Milton J. Shap actually signed the bill into law.
That was a thrill to actually meet the governor. I mean, that's, when you're in third grade, that's, that's like your most momentous achievement. It's a real big thrill.
It was quite the experience for a bunch of eight and nine-year-olds.
The plaque has made its way around to different spots.
So they had put it aside and people forgot about it. And I looked at it and saw the dates and I thought, wow, this is coming up soon on a big anniversary. So we knew we had to do something big to celebrate. We found a box in a storage closet that had a lot of paraphernalia.
A former lead teacher, Joe Canamucio, always saved everything. So we were so grateful to be able to have that.
It was pretty cool finding the box that had all the articles in it.
All of the photos, the pictures, copies of the letters, all the hard work that they did over the course of that year was all stored in a box.
So we went through the box, we photocopied and scanned the different items. We had the students make the little Fireflies that we paced it all over the place.
A lot of emotion too, when Joanne was able to contact former members of the class.
We knew our 50th was coming up. And before I heard from Highland Park, thought about maybe trying to contact people. But Ms. DeVito contacted us first with this awesome celebration.
And I thought, oh yeah, let's, let's go see, you know, let's. So it was, I was curious. I had no idea what a nice, you know, presentation they put together. I, I drove by the park and I saw the Upper Darby band outside. I thought, oh, I don't think I knew what was coming here.
I, I'm kind of overwhelmed by it. I, I did not expect this. I expected a sort of nice event and an assembly and, but just seeing all the kids in purple and gold, it was kind of emotional, I have to say. You, it really does bring back memories of when you're a child and, and you're going to the same school and these kids are going through the same experiences that you went through. And for a minute, I was eight years old again.
We had our first graders learn a poem about Fireflies and they presented at the ceremony.
They got to sing a song that was written for the special occasion 50 years ago. We also had Mayor Brown honor the occasion and so did Representative Curry. And the Department of Education Secretary came down from Harrisburg.
And members of the school board and the mayor and the director of schools. So impressive.
Everyone was really excited to learn a little bit about the history of Highland Park and how the Firefly became the state insect. And they presented together. They went up together and presented and, and really talked about the experience that they had.
So we are officially old schoolers.
Yes. They talked to the kids about how important it is to be involved in civics and how to work with the government in getting things passed that you want to get passed.
With the help of all the students in Highland Park, our parents, and over 6,000 students throughout Pennsylvania, we all wrote letters to our state representatives and senators.
And here we are 50 years later, still celebrating what they did. So it really tells kids like, the world is your oyster. Just go, believe it, work hard, and you can achieve it.
It was a great celebration. The kids really enjoyed hearing about it and celebrating.
It was a wonderful presentation, really special. Actually, everyone that did it, thank you. It was just such a special day and, you know, just an amazing setup.
It was one of the best days ever.
So this celebration was truly an outstanding day. Thank you again to Upper, to everyone, including Upper Darby Band, who helped make the day so special. And thanks to our Home and School Association and those who donated their spirit fundraiser for providing a commemorative purple and gold shirt for our entire Highland Park School family. It was such a joy seeing that entire school proudly wearing purple and gold that day. Thanks, Jason, as well, for a wonderful video. And at this time, I want, I want to present a gift to all the board. We have a shirt to all of you. And I also want to thank our wonderful educator, Michael Kane, who spent so much time helping organize this wonderful event. He has a treasure box of memories and artifacts from 1974 that he can show off right now.
So, so Joanne and Terrence, as the, as the gifts are being given out, another showmanship, Josh, this is, this is, this is what these guys do. But Joanne and Terrence, great job that day. The kids were totally involved. They knew Tennessee was one of the only other states that has the, you know, the Firefly as a state insect. Really well done. The band was there. It was an awesome morning. It was just great. So, you know, Joanne, for you and Terrence, the kids were totally engaged with what happened. They were interested. They were excited. It just wasn't just to be there. They knew what was going on. I think it's a compliment to you guys. And Mr. Kane, it's always good to see you grocery shopping on the weekend. And hopefully you want to hand out the shirts to the, to the board. They'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures?
Sure. We have a couple of ways for people to participate. You can participate both in person and virtually. We take in-person participation before we take virtual or called-in participation. Tonight is board, a board meeting, so it's comments only. There are no questions or answers for this evening. Comment only. If you wanted to provide a general comment, you would have to have done so by signing in by 7:30 or sending in your comment prior to 7:30. I see that there are, well, no one's signing to speak other than, I don't think anybody, one person did. Okay, one person did. So when you come up to speak during the general comments, you'll say your name, address, and you can give your brief three-minute general comment. Those that were virtually sent in will read them at that time as well. Anyone who wants to participate during the report section of the evening, the board will read over the reports, open up the public comment. Those who are in person can come to the microphone, provide your name and address, and you can comment on the report. Those that are virtual, provide your name, address to the email address at boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Again, name, address, and the report you'd like to comment on. Or you can phone in your comment before the report is moved forward at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, in-person comments before virtual or phoned-in comments. Happy to bring that up again if need be. Board President Fields, and we're ready to go.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a, there was a closed session this evening from 5:30 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams.
Present. Oh, sorry. I didn't hear what you said. Sorry. That's her.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Murphy-Morrissey.
Present.
Mr. Hussein.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Des Neuerz.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Present.
Ms. Deborah Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Thank, uh, thank you, Ms. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to Board Docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments. Okay.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain. Motion carried. The minutes for the combined work session, regular meeting of April 9th and the special meeting of April 30th, 2024 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Now for the report of the secretary from Director Murphy-Morrissey.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. And I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. Direct, for the report of the treasurer, Director Brittany Williams.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for his adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. We already have the student representative's report. The budget, personnel, and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public. And our recorder is part of the record. No vote is required. We already have the superintendent's report, so. We will now have an update on the April 30th, 2024 Education and People Services Committee meeting with Director Brittany Williams, who will read a summary. A detailed summary of the meeting included, including public comments can be found on Board Docs. I'll give you a second.
Thank you. The meeting occurred on Tuesday, April 30th, 7:00 p.m. and the agenda items were flexible instructional day, the plan, and that did require or does require board action. And then we did the ironic elementary reconfiguration, which also requires board action. And then Policy 823, which also requires board action. There was no public comments that night. And that concludes the recap.
Okay. Thank you, Director Brittany Williams. We will now, we'll now have an update on the April 30th, 2024 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director Mitchell will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
The finance and operations meeting met after Education and People Services. We reviewed the 2024-2025 proposed final budget, which is for board action tonight. In compliance with the Act One timeline, Mr. Rogers presented the 2024-2025 proposed general fund budget. Administration asked the board to consider this budget for approval at the May 14th board meeting. That's tonight. The final budget presentation will be on June 18th, 2024, which will incorporate any legislative and/or internal changes. And as Dr. McGary stated earlier, we need significant advocacy around that. As everyone knows, the governor's budget was not passed until way into this current school year, which makes it very difficult for us to budget. So please get your advocacy hats on and let them know that that's not acceptable.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. For the Instruction and Curriculum Report, Director War Savage.
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. For the Personnel Report Approval, Director Rachel Mitchell.
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just have a few things. I would like to congratulate all of our retirees and wish you a safe and healthy retirement. I also want to recognize those who are joining the school district and just welcome to the Upper Darby School District family. This truly is a family. And that concludes my report. So I make a motion for the report to be passed.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say I oppose. Those abstaining, please say I abstain. Motion carried. For the Policy Report First Reading, Director Des Neuerz.
Yes. No vote is required, but I will read a brief summary of the updates. And a full summary is available on Board Docs. There are changes to one policy and one policy attachment for consideration for a first reading during this meeting. As a reminder, these policies will be presented at a subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. The one policy and one attachment undergoing a first reading at this evening's meeting are Policy 206, Assignment Within District, and Policy 815, Acceptable Use of Internet Computers and Network Resources. So the Policy 206 attachment is being updated. The Policy 206 attachment details school assignments for all addresses in the district. The Policy 206 attachment is being updated to reflect that, that, as discussed during the April 30th, 2024 Education and People Services Committee in-person and virtual meeting, and beginning with the 24-25 school year, ironic elementary. and beginning with the 24-25 school year, Ronoming Elementary School will serve students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Please note that there are no changes to Policy 206 language at this time. The only changes being considered are changes to the Policy 206 attachment. And for Policy 815, Acceptable Use of Internet Computers and Network Resources, this policy has, has appeared for first reading a couple of times this spring, and that's because a few updates have been added that caused, have, have caused it to return to a first reading. Updates since the April 9th, 2024, first reading of Policy 815. Item number 17 in the prohibition section has been added. This item prohibits audio or video recording of an individual in a classroom setting without that individual's permission. And in brief, Policy 815 is being updated to incorporate changes suggested by both PSBA and the district. The updates include several minor revisions that were made throughout the policy for consistency with other policy documents and alignment with E-rate requirements in court decisions. That concludes the, my first reading comments.
Second reading, Director Des Neuer.
The policy report second reading is in the hand, board member, and has been, been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I, I just have a quick summary of the update to provide. There are changes to one policy going for a second reading this evening. If these changes are approved by the board in this meeting, they will be adopted and implemented. The policy being updated is Policy 823, naloxone. This is a new policy for the district largely following the PSBA model policy for naloxone. As a means of enhancing the health and safety of its students, staff, and visitors, the district may obtain, maintain, administer doses of an opioid antagonist and other facilities, specifically naloxone, for emergency use to assist a student, staff member, or other individual believed or suspected to be experiencing an opioid overdose at school district activities taking place on school grounds. With that said, I move for the adoption of the policy report second reading.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from, oh, Director Williams.
As I stated in the last meeting, I do have issues with liability and how we administer this drug. And so I know that we stated there was no issue with liability last time, but just like with Good Samaritan laws, I think if you help somebody or if you administer CPR, even though you're well-intentioned and well-meaning, there still can be liability issues. So I just wanted to put that on record again.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose.
I oppose.
Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Okay, now. Director Mohammed Hussein with the supplies report.
The supplies report is in the hands, each board member, and has been made available for the public. I move for this adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. That's right, report. Now for the facilities report, Director Murphy-Morrissey.
The facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report are in the hands of each board member and have been, been made available to the public, and I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. All right, now to the finance and budget report approval, Director Vice President Deborah Williams.
The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We're now at the time for collateral assignment reports. Director Murphy-Morrissey, Delaware County Community College.
Yes, so we are excited to announce that George V. Dawson has been recommended as the newest trustee of the Delaware County Community College. This information has been forwarded to Board President, so we can review it. That is the only announcement I have at this time.
Thank you, Director Murphy-Morrissey. The DCIU Board, Director Mitchell.
Sure, the DCIU Board met on May 1st and again last Wednesday for their committee meeting. The board meeting was just regular business of the board, but I did want to bring to the board's attention that the DCIU is in the process of doing a renovation and addition to the Falkroft Center. The, the plan has gone through several iterations of changes due to some challenges with the community, similar to things that we experience here, unfortunately. But we, we had the opportunity to walk through the building and to envision the new space that is going to be really serving this community. A lot of students from Upper Darby go to Falkroft because it's our closest center. So it's, it's going to be a pretty amazing center. Once it's done, some of the enhancements that are going to be made are going to be phenomenal. So that will be something that will be enjoyed by all. So that's really the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Legislative Council, Director Kimberly Clayton.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our Legislative Council meeting was held on May 8th. There's just a few things for me to go over. One is that we have our legislative breakfast this Friday on the 17th. And I wanted to also echo what everybody else has already said on here, up here. We still need continued advocate, advocacy for the budget to be passed, and hopefully to be done within this fiscal school, fiscal year for us to be ready for 24-25. I will be going back to Harrisburg to make my voice heard, and hopefully we can get some things done, and I encourage other people to do the same. And that concludes my report.
Fantastic. Thank you, Director Glenn. And Director Glenn, I know you have a full plate, as they like to say, so I really appreciate the trips you've taken to Harrisburg and the work you've done in this area. It's really appreciated. Thank you very much. Menon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee Director Brittany Williams.
Yes, we met this past Monday for a meeting. I was virtual. I was able to connect virtually. And it was just really exciting to hear the recipients of this year scholarship and past recipients. So they kind of reviewed what the students are doing, and you would be amazed to just hear such good things about Upper Darby School District. Yes. So is it May 31st that is the?
Yep, and it's top secret.
Okay, it's top secret.
The names are top secret.
Yes, the names are top. Good thing I didn't write any names down. But the stories were very, they were very, very good to see, to hear, and it's exciting to see, so, yes.
Thank you, Director Brittany Williams. Home and School Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. We had a home, district-wide home and school meeting yesterday evening at 6:30 to 7:00. We basically went over the hallmarks of the last few committee and general school board meetings. Three things that just come to mind right now. One of them is just making sure that the home and schools knew that we were continuing our plan with improving the facilities, including, among other things, I believe, the softball field up at the high school, the dugout area. It's looked the same even since I was a student here, so it's definitely about time that that area gets sprucened up a bit. Another thing that we went over in that meeting was, of course, continued advocacy for the budget. And there were, there was also really interesting and good conversation coming from the home and schools to Dr. McGary when they were asking, and this just goes to show how empathetic our community is to our teachers. This particular individual was asking about the half, the, the point five when it comes to a professional, whatever mumbo jumbo you want to put, Dr. McGary, you want to?
Yeah, I figured you'd do a great job calling it mumbo jumbo. You know, when I talk, when I talk, it has a tendency to be mumbo jumbo. No, my dad would have said that. No. You're right. I mean, a point five, there, there was educators that are home and school members that are involved, rightfully so. And the question was, and it's the same question Board Member Deborah Williams brought up at the last meeting, there's, how's this going to work out? And I understood that there's a point five involved. And that parent and teacher and in their community asked, what's that going to be like? When we explained, we're actually turning somebody into a full-time position, not hiring a point five. There was an understanding of that. I don't know that it was thrilling to hear that there's someone traveling still, which we explained as well. Hopefully, we can move into a point where we don't have as much of that. It used to be commonplace in education to be point two here or point five there. It's not the case anymore, and we're certainly going to keep an eye on that. The parent was expressing concern about teacher burnout, and which we appreciate. So when there are opportunities to not have people travel based on enrollment and finances, we will certainly do that.
And also to add on to that, Dr. McGary was also careful to mention that this particular individual, who is the point five, is very, very encouraged and interested in making sure that they do what they can to turn that into a one instead of a point five. So that was really good to see the administration working with our very paid and uniquely, or very paid, our underpaid and uniquely qualified professionals and developed.
The only, only final part is that we have to do, even though Damian did a great job of saying, well, you know, these are the presentations, make sure we forward these out. There was a question about the last day of school, and I'll put a communication out again reminding about the last day of school, just reminding people about that. But as Damian said on the call, like, you know, we have to keep encouraging our community to read the presentations, watch the live streaming and be there. But the engagement from the home and school was great. And Damian, thanks for, you know, advocating and having comments with them that night. It's good to be engaged.
Thank you, Director War Savage. PSBA Representatives, Director, Vice President Deborah Williams.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind especially the directors here that this is PSBA Advocacy Week, but it's the virtual one this week from May 13th through the 17th. And so legislators have scheduled meetings, so if you're interested in a meeting with one, you can do that online and set up a scheduled meeting with a legislator, okay? School Director Monthly Exchange is, are still happening, and if you missed one, like for last month, they're recorded on your MyPSBA. There's also some webinar series that are on MySPA, MyPSBA as well. And one is Building Learning Communities, and another one is The Landscape of Education, and that's post-COVID, if you're interested in that. So that concludes my PSBA update. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice President Williams. Policy Liaisons, Director Des Neuer.
Thank you, President Fields. Two things that are going to be taking time in terms of policy for the next few months are, and both of these, while they impact policy, are all, are, are, or will have much broader impact on the district. And the two topics are artificial intelligence, so-called generative artificial intelligence that, that we've seen all over the news for the last year and a half. And I'm actually, Dr. McGary invited me to attend a training session that is being held for district administrators, so I'll attend that at the end of June. And then the other thing that's going to be taking time in the district this summer is the new Title IX regulations, which will involve significant policy updates. So more to come on both those subjects.
All right, thank you, Director Des Neuer. Communications Directors, Mitchell and Glenn.
Just, you know, continue to encourage people to sign up to get our school board updates. Kimberly? And I just did want to commend the administration. I mean, in the past week or so, I've seen a number of lock-ins or I think it's lockouts or something like that, or evacuations for fire alarms and things like that. And I just want to say that the communication is so far advanced from where we were. And I'm sure the community and parents really appreciate that, and I just wanted to highlight that.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director War Savage with his first report.
Yes, thank you very much, President Fields, and a special thanks goes out to fellow Director Murphy-Morrissey for easing me into the foundation. I have had email communication with Harry as well as the foundation president to get my feet wet. The first meeting that we're going to have is going to be on, I believe it is next Tuesday. Yes, on the 21st at 6:30. It'll be at one of the meeting rooms in Drexel Brook, so I'll have a full report then. As for functions going on with the foundation, we have the Shaner 5K this Saturday at 8:00 AM. For those early risers, it'll be at the Arlington Cemetery. No matter if you're running or not, look at me, I'm definitely not running. It's definitely good to get out and enjoy some community fellowship.
Thank you, Damian. Is there any old business from board members? Director War Savage.
Real quick, several of us on the board, as well as former president, former school board president, now mayor, Ed Brown, attended the Bywood Multicultural Fair a couple of Saturdays ago. It was awesome to see all the different performances, the students, the food. It was just awesome.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Damian. Anybody else? Okay, new business?
Yes, I would like to bring forth, oh, I'm sorry, you guys. The funding resolution before.
Please do.
Yes. And again, in the same vein, we are talking about funding, advocating, you know, the fight still continues. So this is another thing that we are bringing forward to try to move our state legislators to just in the right direction, right? So Upper Darby School District urges the General Assembly to adopt the Governor's Historic State Budget Proposal and to pass the legissta, legislation, making the necessary multi-year commitment to address Pennsylvania's entire constitutional and moral obligation to fully and fairly fund public schools.
That's great. Thank you. Are we all, I guess, all those in favor? Say again. Wait a second. So I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. All right, this resolution passes. Thank you. Any other new business? Damian.
Just real quick, I wanted to remind the public, speaking of money, budgets and things like that, on May 16th at 6:00 PM at the Upper Darby Municipal Building, which is at 100 Garrett Road and up here in Upper Darby, the PA House Appropriations Committee is hosting a regional budget briefing. Join your local representatives, including our homegirls, Rep. Gina Curry, as well as Rep. Heather Boyd, for community conversation about the 2024-2025 state budget. So along the lines of the continued advocacy, that's just another avenue for you to make your voice heard.
Thank you, Director War Savage. Director Mitchell.
All of this talk about advocacy and funding is making my heart so happy tonight. But I do have something pretty serious that I want to share with you all. Dear fellow board members, administration, and the Upper Darby community, it's with a heavy heart that I submit my resignation from my position on the Upper Darby School Board effective June 11th. After much consideration, reflection, and prayer, my family and I have made a difficult decision that it's time for me to step down from this role to focus on caring for our loved one who is in need of our support and assistance in another state. Over the past 10 years, serving on the Upper Darby School Board has been an immense privilege and honor. This community holds a special place in my heart, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have been part of such a vibrant and diverse district. The dedication and passion of our educators, staff, and students and families. educators, staff, and students and families have inspired me every day, and I am proud of the progress that we have made in the face of so many challenges. Advocating for the students and families of Upper Darby has been a central focus of my tenure on this board. I have dedicated countless hours to advocating for adequate funding at both the state and federal levels, recognizing the urgent need to address the longstanding underfunding of our district. While there is still much work to be done, I am hopeful that the groundwork we have laid as a team of 10 will continue to pave the way for positive change and progress in the future. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my fellow board members, district administrators, teachers, support staff, and community members for their unwavering support, collaboration, and commitment to our shared vision of providing opportunity, unity, and excellence for every student in the Upper Darby School District. It has been an honor to work alongside such dedicated individuals, and I am grateful for the friendships and memories that we have created together. As I embark, I can't look at any of you, sorry. As I embark on this new chapter in my life, I will carry with me the lessons I learned and the experiences shared during my time on the school board as an involved parent and as an involved parent in this district. While I may no longer hold an official role within the district, my dedication to the students and families of Upper Darby will remain steadfast, and I will continue to pray for this district, which has experienced decades of inadequate funding from the state. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve this incredible community. I'm confident that the Upper Darby School District will continue to thrive and flourish under the capable leadership of my colleagues on this board, our administration, and our incredible staff. I do want to just, as I was packing and going through things, I found the very first public thing that I came up to the microphone as a parent to say, and I won't read it all because, you know, it was a very tumultuous time in the district. But I do want to, it was from 2012, and I think it applies to almost everything we have to consider when we're making choices with the limited resources that we have. This is a quote directly from my speech. To be frank, this proposed change has little to do with test scores and much to do with the agenda of the state. We, as the community of Upper Darby School District, need the school boards and the administration's help to effect real change in Harrisburg when it comes to fairly and adequately funding our public schools. Fair funding is one of the biggest civil rights issues facing this generation. Those that I have served alongside of on the board and administration are committed to this battle over the civil rights of our children, and I implore you, this board, the community, our staff, to continue to fight the fight. I promise I'll be rooting for you no matter where I am. Thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'll never forget it.
All right. So let me just say, you know, Director Mitchell, always, 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 family first. And you're leaving to take care of a loved one, and that's always, we do this thing, we do this work, but family is where, is the most important thing in all our lives. And so take no shame and no guilt in going to do that. And I don't think anybody anywhere would take issue with that. And I will say to the folks on the board and people in the community, we are here, and we are in this position, and the ironic is expanded, and Clifton Heights is going to be built, and the good things that we are doing, these fields that have been done, this is all started, this all started with Director Mitchell. Okay? And we would not be in this, we would not be in this position if it weren't for her. All right. And so Rachel, I thank you for your work and your support, and you're still here for another meeting, so it gives me a chance to write up something nice and big and not off the cuff, okay? All right, you want to go?
If I just, I have other comments I'll make later on, but I've had conversations obviously with Rachel and her husband Matt in the past. I thank you for sparing me on the original comments when we, as, you know, that you were originally going to say about our first time in meeting. But I think, you know, for me, a lot of the highlights when we first started committee meetings, I was just talking to Christine about this today, was a healthy conversation. The amount of preparation and work that went into starting committee meetings prior to that, meetings were once a month, there was no back and forth, it was comment only. That changed. We put hours and hours of, I remember the first committee meetings and you were one of the co-chairs, just hours of time prepping for those original presentations and to get it right. And I'll say it, you can be a little bit of, you know, difficult at times in a positive way. And you taught me, you taught me that parents matter a lot, their kids matter, and even though we might have the answer, it's about their feelings in the moment and what's going on. And you always advocated for the kids. You are obviously without question somebody who got on this board, and politics was not the reason for you getting involved. It was about the kids and what the kids could have or not have. And I think I've learned a lot over my career with you, the details, the attention to details, listening, meeting with people, a long way to go in some of those areas probably still. But what you've done here for this school district, this community has been phenomenal. I mean, you think about the beginning stages of what happened, it feels like yesterday, joining that first meeting when all those reading positions were cut and you expressed your concerns as a parent in an audience where there maybe were other three, only three people that night. To be where you are today, I appreciate what you've done in the advocacy for the school district. So thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. I'm looking at my sheet. Susan Parker, come on down. Good to see you again.
Susan Parker, 2104 Green Hill Road, Post Office, Lansdowne, Upper Darby Township. I just want to say, as I said the first year when I did the history thing, you are the one face, when you said not political, she was the one face back when I used to come to the board, who voted her conscience, her heart, and whose motivation was nothing to do with politics, but it was absolutely everything to do with the Upper Darby student body. So I want to thank you so much, and good luck taking care of that family. Having just done that myself, it's a tough road. But anyway, so I want to thank Dr. McGary and a few other people who took the time to meet with me and explain, you know, I come here and I say, you know, what about my half of the school district, and let's bring things up to date, and everybody else is getting stuff. And so they explained the plan, and I've been thinking about it, and I know no matter where it goes, just like the ironic, somebody's going to be upset. We cannot please everybody, and I am well aware of that, you know? I've served on the board of the Y, I was a scout leader, I've served on Girl Scouts committees, and, you know, so I understand that. And I understand that probably the school is going to be, I live in the plaza, and that area, right at the end of it, is where you're looking at. And so my neighborhood, who has been bussed for close to 50 years, will actually be able to walk to school for the first time in 50 years. But anyway, so, but also because I've been at that same place since 1978, and I see what goes on there, and no longer is anybody using the baseball fields. That's over and done with. My son is 43, two, 43, I don't know, he's up there, and he played softball, you know, T-ball and baseball there, but no one, right now, this isn't a community that those fields, so I can see giving that up. Plus, I walk my dog down there. There's more, there's a road, and there's even a road back there, so there's more. But one thing, that field, the soccer field way at the end, if you drive back there on the weekend, that's, that's public property and it's community-used, and you see soccer players, adults, playing soccer there. And so I really hate to see that given up. And I know, but there's still plenty of space there. And another thing that bothered me, an elementary school with 1,000 students seemed a little overwhelming. So I want to tell you about, my daughter has a friend who's principal in Phoenixville Barclay Elementary School in Phoenixville, and that school is two through five. And they have what they call an early learning center with kindergarten and first grade is in one building. And I know the plan is, you know, we've got to put these kids somewhere. And even that little boy thinks it's so much better, he's not going to Glen Olden anymore. This is still pretty far from his house, and this will be closer, but it's still not within walking distance. It's a bus, bus thing. But, but so what I'm thinking is that instead of, you know, all these kindergarten centers, and even in the presentation, she said the connection to the first grade, you know, Phoenixville has done this, and the teacher who now is principal of the school said, actually, because their population shifts and changes, in 2025, they're going to be bringing the fifth, the sixth grade back in. So I'm thinking, think kindergarten, first grade, and then you wouldn't have to have such a big elementary school. That's, it works indeed.
Are there any online comments? Director Buford.
Yes, there is one comment. This comment is from Lee Jordan, located at 90 Pilgrim Lane in Drexel Hill. This comment was received on the 14th at 5:57 PM via email. It is a general comment. Comment begins, "I have a general comment about the outside condition of Upper Darby High School. I was at the high school a couple of weeks ago and was wondering why a facility that holds 4,257 students doesn't have a new quote-unquote UD emblem sign like the elementary schools and the new administration building. I was watching a couple of parents taking down an old wooden sign about an event that was held at the high school. I know there is a sign in front of the Performing Arts Center, but another sign should also be installed in front of the high school advertising. All the wonderful events happening at the high school, and could also highlight our fabulous students and teachers, especially since the new football field is open and we are hosting more events. I would also suggest taking down the green roof shed that we received as a grant from Villanova University years ago. It really is an eyesore and has never properly been maintained since the day it was installed. It is located in front of the gym entrance." End of comment. And that concludes our comments for this evening.
Thank you, Director Buford. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the, yeah, is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.